Special recognition of a very special day, and I'm going to ask Joe Stevens to kind of talk about it, but it's a National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And so, Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you, and then we'll read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone. It's great to be back in this building. So, the Iowa Homeless Memorial is coming Friday, and you're all invited. It's at the State Capitol. It's on the West Capitol Terrace at 5:30 PM. We do this every year on December 21st, so if you can't come this year, there's no excuse. You can put it on your calendar for the next ten. But we remember people who died homeless in Iowa, and we honor them as human beings, and we do, we commit ourselves to preventing future homeless deaths and working together on solutions. And so, that's again at the State Capitol. That'll be at 5:30 PM. It is an outdoor event. You'll be surrounded by a lot of our homeless friends here in town who have lost their friends, so it's very cold out. You'll get a glimpse of what it's like to be homeless. And so, dress warmly. And many of you probably know this already, but it's the same throughout the country. Emergency shelters are not places that you can live. They're not made to be lived at year-round. And so, in central Iowa, our shelter stay limits are 30 days, and we've got some awesome shelters here in central Iowa. And so, 30 days is the most you can stay at most shelters. A central Iowa shelter, you can stay for 90 days, and then you've got to be out for 90, and then you can stay for 16, and you've got to be out for 90, and then you can stay for 30. So, you know, when you'll see people out there under a bridge or in a tent, in most cases, in fact, in less than 25% of the cases, are they choosing to be there. So, we're working on solutions in the mayor and the city council, and so, we just really love Des Moines, and we think Des Moines is a great place to live, and we think we can do more for our poorest citizens. And so, come out at the memorial and help us remember those who have died homeless here in Iowa, and let's work together to prevent that in the future. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor.
You bet. So, it's always good to see you here, Joe, and all the work that you do with JAPA, and not only memorializing and honoring those people that have lived in Des Moines but have sometimes suffered some really extreme weather events and extreme situations, but the help that you and your organization and everybody in and around the city of Des Moines does to try to help those that are less fortunate is to be commended. And so, thank you all, and I know that the whole city council thanks you for your efforts as well. And I see Mr. Coleman is here, who's been our chair of the Homeless Coordinating Council as well. And I see one of our former council members here, so, Mike, thanks for being here as well. I'm going to quickly read the proclamation. Whereas the winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed low-income men, women, and children in Des Moines, the spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding our commitment to end homelessness. And whereas December 21st has been designated the National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Health Care for the Homeless Council, and whereas JAPA serves homeless residents living in tents, under bridges, and in vehicles, and on the streets, and organizes the Iowa Homeless Memorial each year to honor and remember those who have died homeless in Iowa and to raise awareness about what can be done to prevent future homeless deaths. And whereas in the season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Des Moines are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas remembering those who have died on the streets, the cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent, as is the city's and county's collective commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now, therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim December 21st, 2018, is National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. In recognition of the people who have died homeless in and around Des Moines, we hereby ask all citizens to take a moment of silence in remembrance and encourage our citizens to support all local efforts to eliminate homelessness in our community. Joe, thank you for everything that you do. Let's give him a great big hand. So, just before Joe leaves, some people have asked me, why do you do it December 21st? It's right before Christmas. It's right before whatever. And the reason we do, not only is it's a time of sharing with others, but it's also the longest night of the year. So, Joe, thanks. All right. Prior to the start of our city council meeting, we, this evening, are going to have the municipal housing agency governing board meeting, and I will ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Main item on this agenda this evening is item three, approving the issuance of 12 project-based Section 8 vouchers. Board communication number 18-664. We'll open it up and ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to discuss the issuance of 12 project-based Section 8 vouchers. Anyone? Seeing none?
I'll move it.
It's been moved. Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, we'll ask everybody to please vote.
Seven yes.
All right. Our final item is motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The municipal housing agency governing board sits adjourned. Thank you All right. We've done our proclamation. This is our, again, regularly scheduled final meeting of the year, and prior to the start of our city council meeting, we generally have a message from one of our council members, and tonight, it's our own council member, Linda Westergaard. Linda, would you like to have a stand-up, or?
If you feel so inclined to, please do.
Okay. Anybody that would like to participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time, please.
This is a prayer for the homeless. Here are prayers for all women and men, boys and girls, who are homeless today. For those sleeping outside, and for those who can only find shelter for the night but must wander during the day. For families broken because they could not afford to pay rent. For those who have no family or friends who can take them in. For those who have no place to keep possessions that remind them who they are. For those who are afraid and hopeless. For all these people, we pray that you will provide shelter, security, and hope. For those of us who have warm homes and comfortable beds, let us not be lulled into complacency and forgetfulness. We ask that our leaders work to strengthen the social safety network that is so important to the homeless. Many, may all of us be empowered through word and deed and through the political means we have to bring justice and peace to those who are homeless. Amen.
Before we call our meeting order, I just want to notice everybody that's in the audience tonight, and not only tonight, but every other night, and thank you for all participating in local government. This is what makes serving in local government gives us a little sense of being in that we hear from our constituents on a daily basis, whether it's at City Hall, or it's on the streets, or it's in the grocery store. But we are here on a nonpartisan basis. We really like and encourage all of you to participate and let us know what your concerns are, because that's what we do at the local government level. I know there's frustrations about partisanship and everything else, but I'll tell you, at the local level, we participate with all citizens regardless of whatever color tie they wear or anything else. It's, we're proud to serve you, and thank you for being part of the participatory government at the local level, because this is where stuff actually happens. So, thank you all very much. I will, let's call the meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? Anybody? I will note, I think somewhere here, we've got a couple of amendments. There is item 47 on the regular agenda. Yeah, actually, has, it's actually on the consent, has been withdrawn by the city manager. Item 53A is corrected. It's in ordinance and will be effective March 1st. Item 57 is correct. It's a roll call. Item 58 is corrected. Schedule a hearing on a not-to-exceed $8,500,000 refunding or re-issuance of Section 108 government guaranteed participation certificates, Series HUD 2008-A, and associated note issued for the Gray's Landing Project, 1/14/19, I believe will be scheduling a hearing. So, there is one extra item. It's approving incorporation of the Connect Downtown Plan as an element of the Move DSM Transportation Master Plan the sponsors, council members, Coleman and Gatto. So, those are the only changes to the agenda as presented and/or as amended. So, if that is okay, let's move it with those corrections.
I'll move it with those corrections.
All right. Thank you.
Seven yes.
Item three is approving the consent agenda, and tonight, those are items three through 51. These are generally routine items, and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless somebody, either from the audience or a city council member, asks to have one pulled either for clarification or further discussion. This evening, again, those are items three through 51, and I'll quickly read to you. Item 4L, council member Coleman votes no. Item six, council member Coleman wishes to speak. Item seven, council member Westergaard wishes to speak. Item 10, council member Gray wishes to speak. Item 23, council member Gatto wishes to speak. Item 37, council member Gray votes no. Item 38, council member Gray votes no. Item 39, council member Gray votes no. And item 47, council member Mandelbaum wishes to speak, which is the withdrawn item. Do you still want to speak on that?
Probably not.
Okay.
I don't have a lot to say.
He's okay. Disregard that last. All right.
I'll move.
With that, the items have been moved, and we'll ask everyone to vote, please. That takes us right now to item six. Item six is public improvements ordering construction of the Rearview Park improvements, receiving bids of 1/15 of 19, setting date of hearing of 2/11 of 19. The engineering estimate is $755,000. Council communication number 18-670, Mr. Coleman.
I just want to take a minute to compliment our colleague, Councilman Westergaard. This is an important project, and I wasn't sure if she'd pull it off or not, to let the citizens on, you know, the north side especially, know that we're all in on this, and we're really excited to get this project underway. And I just wanted to compliment you and to thank you for pushing through a couple of obstacles to make sure that it is still a project that's going to happen, so.
Thanks. And to the folks that have worked so hard on this, and I've said this so many times, these folks for the last 10 years have been selling hamburgers and hot dogs on Friday nights in June in Des Moines, when it's hot, and the sun is burning down on them, and they're the ones that should be thanked, because they're the ones that have worked so hard to make this possible, and I see a couple of them in the audience. So, thank you, and thanks to everyone at the Parks Area Foundation for working hard on this.
And let's hope the bids come in at the estimate or under, huh?
We need to get some bids.
You bet.
It might help attendance if you said that they not only sold hot dogs and hamburgers, but you can also buy a beer there.
Actually, there's quite a few different kinds you can get. I worked there one Saturday. It's a good deal, or Friday.
You can move it, Linda, if you want.
Nope. I hit the wrong button.
I'll move item six.
Sorry. Better reset.
Do you want to reset at all?
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
Seven yes.
Okay. Takes us to item seven, was approving professional services agreement with Savage Replug and Associates, Inc., doing business as SVP A Architects, Inc., for Fire Station Number 11, not to exceed $392,275. Council communication number 18-674, council member Westergaard.
Thank you. This is a very important item, and this is just the beginning. A few weeks ago, we approved the sale, the purchase of the land of where Fire Station 11 would be. This is for the architects, just to enter into a design, a plan with them. But now the heavy lift is, is we have to figure out a way to pay for this fire station. And I know that I'm reminded of the report that is out there on the city website, where we had a consultant come in, and our response times could certainly be better on the northeast side. And this fire station will keep our first responders safe, and it will keep our residents safe. And it's important, but let's talk about how we're going to pay for it. And the one-cent sales tax that we have on our agenda tonight is, we've got money put in there for our first responders, and we will be able to get our new fire station if we can pass this one-cent sales tax. We'll get it quicker than what we would if we don't pass it. So, for the folks on the north and the east side and north too, this is important. So, please, go and get all the information that you need, ask questions of council, of the group that's working on the local option sales tax, and we'll get it passed. Thank you. With that, I will move item seven.
Seven yes.
This takes us to item 10, was approving an exception to the request for proposal RFP process for good cause and approving the professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates, Inc., for design and construction phase services for 47th and Holcomb Avenue reconstruction, not to exceed $158,000. Council communication number 18-673, council member Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Normally, I don't like to see things go past the bidding process, but this is good work on staff's part to start moving these projects in a timely manner. We've got to get after some of these stormwater issues in as soon as time as we can. So, I'm really excited to see this happening. This is moving forward at a pace that I think the neighbors are glad to see for a change. 47th and Holcomb got hit pretty bad. We want to make sure that people have safety in their own homes, and so, this is a great step, even though it's just professional services, but this is going to get the thing started for our neighborhoods. So, I'm going to move item 10, and applaud staff for moving this thing up on the process.
All right. Takes us to item 23. It's communications from planning and zoning. 23 is regarding requests from Blackbird Investments, LLC owner to vacate a 16-foot-by-24-foot segment of air rights over adjoining Walland Street to allow for a swimming pool to extend from the 33rd floor of the proposed building at 555 Walland Street. Council member Gatto.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. But I appreciate that this is coming to us, but I think that we have a lot of heavy lifting before we can start approving vacations of air rights and different things like that. I know when this article was in the paper about this, about this particular project, there's been quite a bit of curiosity, I'll say, about the developer and the wherewithal to get this done and to be able to work with some of the subcontractors out in our city. I would like personally, and I'm not sure, I have not seen anything of a development agreement that we have in place for this development. And before we start really okaying things and doing things for this development, I would like to receive and file this, first of all, from planning and zoning, and then refer back to the city managers and economic development to follow up with the development agreement and to look at where we're at with this project, what we're doing with this project, what type of economic incentive we're giving, where we're at with financing and things like that from the developer. I'm concerned that we're getting the cart before the horse here, and doing a lot of things and getting a lot of people excited before this, before we know if this is ever going to get built. So, that would be my motion. If anyone else has any comments, I'd be happy to hear them, but that's my motion.
All right. Anybody else?
I support the motion. On this project, I've had previous questions just about the level of affordability here, and it's targeting a percentage of the units that is lower than what we have been targeting in downtown. And I just want to make sure that I understand the market and that it's a project that we desire enough to provide an incentive to. And Scott, lastly, at the, you know, at the risk of, you know, sounding snobbish, I'm not quite sure a lot of the citizens would understand city subsidy going into a pool that suspended a couple story, you know, whatever, 30 stories up. It just strikes me as a luxury that maybe the citizens can't afford to subsidize. And I know that we are going to end up, as Joe said, we haven't seen a definitive development agreement, but these projects don't happen without city assistance, and it just seems that I'd have a hard time defending this project. At one time, they talked about the pool in a market-rate apartment across the street. That's changed a lot. Their project has changed locations and the scope of affordability. I'm in support of the affordability, but it just seems like this really expensive feature is out of place in that, especially with city money. So, I guess before it comes back, I'd like a little bit more information on it. And the developer came up at the zoo. Could you talk to the zoo leadership just about their status? Is that all right? Thank you.
Yeah. I'll weigh in. I mean, I think the concerns raised by council member, members Gatto and Coleman are well-taken. I've got a lot of questions about this project, too. I will say that of all the things I have unresolved questions about, the piece of this project that I like the best is the fact that there's a significant affordable housing component with that, and that the affordable housing component actually goes beyond what some of the other affordable pieces of, or projects have done in downtown. I think we need more affordable housing downtown. So, that's the one, the one thing that this project, I think, has going for it, that I'm interested, I'm interested in the project because of that. I have lots of the same concerns that the two of you expressed, and lots of outstanding questions that I think we need answered before we act.
I'm, just let me clarify, just so people don't think we disagree about the affordable housing. I'm in 100% support of affordable housing here and in most of the projects that we support. I also think that there is a reasonable way that the city can address it. Is it 40% of the median income? Is it 60% of the median income? And depending on the price of the building and what's there, we get our money's worth far better for families and others in other parts of the city than in a high-rise downtown. And I just want to make sure that the income levels that could be used downtown meet the need that's down there, and maybe those tax credits and the subsidy would be better off in other places for, you know, for poor families. I just want to make sure that it matches up.
Tony?
I was just going to follow up. I think it's premature to be doing something like this until we really see the total package, so I would agree about receiving filing it.
And I know that we've talked about this situation a lot, and I agree with Josh. I think that we need to find opportunities for affordable housing all across the city, you know, not just in one way or another. I think where development opportunities present themselves, to include affordable housing in the package makes sense and is, has merit, no matter where it is. But do we have a motion?
I moved, I moved to receive and file and referred it back to the city manager with some of the statements that I had made, and Councilman Coleman, that you can follow up with us about that, and before any action items are taken through this property.
And I think maybe expand on what Mr. Coleman said. I think we'd like to understand a little better what the affordable housing looks like.
That would be part of it, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, everyone, for your input.
Item 53, amending chapter 18 in the municipal code regarding community cats. Council communication number 18-668A is a final consideration of the ordinance. Waiver is requested by the city manager and requires six votes. It will be effective March 1st of 2019. Let's go ahead and ask if there's anybody in the audience.
Are we going to go back to 52?
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry.
We can do this one. I just, I didn't know we were skipping.
That's all right. Well, as long as we read 53.
Let's do 53, absolutely.
Anybody here to talk about community cats? Seeing none, could we have a motion on that?
We do have one.
Ah. Step right up. Is this our only speaker on community cats? Okay.
Britt Gonya, 5703 Walnut Hill Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa, also director of Furry Friends Refuge at 1723 Grand Avenue in Des Moines, and also in West Des Moines. I would like to say that I really appreciate the discussion that we've had about the issues that we have facing us with community cats. I think basically, sometimes... I think basically sometimes the misunderstanding is whether the options are to have cats or to not have cats, and that's really not the case here. The cats are going to be here whether we decide to implement this program or whether we decide to try to spend a whole bunch of resources to hire a bunch of people to round cats up and kill them. This is not only a much more humane method, but it is a far better use of taxpayer dollars. If the environment is hospitable to cats, which we know that there are pockets of this community, that definitely are, we need to be trying to do something proactive to reduce that population over time. And TNR has been proven in many different communities to be a very effective and humane way of doing that. So, I think that this is an important piece of the puzzle as we're working to get Des Moines to achieve that no-kill status, that this is definitely one of those important pieces. And I would ask that you would support this.
Thanks, Britt. Did you want to speak too, sir?
Yes, please.
Step right up. Give us your name and address, please.
Yeah. Tom Colvin. I'm with the Animal Rescue League of Iowa. And I just wanted to say thank you for all of the support. I'm not sure I really just want to repeat everything that Ms. Gonya just said. You know, it is important that we take this move, you know, the benefits both to the animal control department and the cats and people working together. It's extremely important. So, I want to say thank you both to the council for bringing this up and to the staff for working so hard on it. It's been quite a journey for a lot of years, so it's good to see this actually coming up for vote. So, strongly recommend that the council vote for this, vote positive for this. And as stated the last time I was in front of you, the Animal Rescue League is prepared to provide resources to help it be successful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion?
Yeah. I'd like to move this item. I think this is a great step forward from an animal welfare perspective for our city. Really appreciate all of the work that all of the stakeholders put into this item. I think it's going to pay dividends to the city now and down the line and appreciate the fact that folks have worked together on this.
All right.
Mayor, could I speak before we vote?
Please.
I continue to have a lot of apprehension about it, but I will tell you, I trust ARL. I'm really happy that furry friends is part of the solution, and that means something to me. And I particularly trust our police department. But this is really hard for me because I haven't bought in all the way. It would help me if the council would consider a couple of amendments, so I guess you'd have to, you know, agree or we could vote on them. I'd like to ensure that we have like a six- and 12-month report that includes data, where cats were dropped back off. I'd like to measure if there's a concentration in a particular area. I'd like to have some qualifiable data or information about how our partners think it's working. I'd like to know a little bit about the complaints that we've received. And I'd like to see at the end of that second report, one at six-month, one at 12-months, that the policy sunsets and that based on the data and the report that we get back, we have to continue it. So, maybe in 14 months on, you know, March 1st of 2020, the council would have to act to continue it. I just think there could be a lot of problems. The ordinance rightfully says that residents can make the request that cats not be returned to their neighborhood. I personally would like to give neighborhood groups, our official neighborhood groups, the ability to opt in or opt out. I doubt the council will go along with that, but maybe if it's not working the way we want, that's something we could do a year from now. So, I guess I would like to add to the motion that we'd have to renew its authority on March 1st of 2020, 14, 15 months from now, and that we have reports between now and then at the six and 12 months, just to make sure the council really understands the results of the policy.
Mind the concern, how long would it take to get results? I mean, six months seems a fairly short time, but I would do a yearly.
I'd at least like to know after six months, how many cats have we put back and where are they going? I think asking for information and transparency on it is just going to ensure that it's, you know, fairly inequitably done, you know, around the city. And I'm not dissing anybody's motives or inferring that I think that something sinister is going to happen. I just want to make sure that it's fair, and I want the council to be able to have data so that if we need to move in a different direction, we can.
I mean, I think the data point is well-taken. I think in everything that we do, we should try and strive to be data-driven, and I think it's fair to ask for data and to evaluate how we're doing to make sure that we're actually doing what we intended to do. And so, with the amendments as regard to the data pieces in terms of the collection at six months and 12 months, I'd consider those friendly. I would be willing to revisit the conversation based on the data, but I don't want to set a sunset at this time. I'd be open to having that conversation based on the report back that we get, but I think that we want to give folks confidence that this is the direction we're going, but that if it proves that it's not working or not working as intended, then we can have another discussion and take a step back.
And be subject to review.
Can we agree that we would have in February or March or next year after we have 12 months of data? Are we not starting this until?
March.
Not until March? So, maybe we give 12 months of data and in April, we have a scheduled workshop on it? Can we?
I review of it.
So that we can go through the data? I mean, whether or not we vote to continue it or vote to amend it, I just want the authority where we have a known public discussion about it and share the data that we have.
I think that's appropriate, and I'd be supportive of that.
Yeah. And I think that the collectors of the data, I would assume that it would be available monthly. I mean, if somebody really wanted to look at it.
You would think.
Senator, we're just affecting birth rates here, so we can't expect too much in six months.
Well, that's my... Mine was more the timing. Are you going to have enough data to give you good information, not to have just the yearly?
But we won't make a decision until after the 12-month.
That's what, that was my suggestion, too, Joe.
Well, it'd be interesting to see what kind of numbers we're getting. I mean, are we getting 10 or 100 or 1,000? I mean, I don't know what the numbers will even look like, but it'll be interesting.
I think the citizens would want to know that.
Yep.
Specifically, the numbers of what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Thank you for accepting that and schedule on a workshop.
Okay.
Do I need to move? Are you guys comfortable moving the second and third reading?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
So, I'll move that as well.
Seven, yes.
So, we moved 53 and 53A with the comments. All right. Let's quickly move back to item 52. Apologize to everybody. This is amending Chapter 30 of the municipal code regarding businesses engaged in the practice of massage therapy without valid licenses and/or involved in illegal activities. Council communication number 18-682A is the final consideration in the ordinance above the waivers requested by councilmember Coleman and requires six votes. Ms. Coleman, why don't I quickly pass it over to you? You've been working on this not only here but with the Metro Advisory Council and maybe quickly move this thing forward.
Yeah. We had a nice discussion this morning at a city council workshop. In summary, I think there was strong consensus that the council had not armed our police department with the right ordinance to quickly and definitively address the illegitimate massage therapy places around town. I heard from it a lot. Bill and I in our neighborhood seemed to have just had a half dozen pop up in about a four-month period of time. It was disappointing to many of our neighbors, disgusting to a lot of them, including me and my family and people that patronize the businesses in and around Beverdale. We looked for ways to address it. The city is part of MAC, the Metropolitan Advisory Council. It is a cooperative committee of all the cities and counties in the metro area. Joe and I served on a committee regionally to address this issue, and we drafted a model ordinance that gives the police, local policing powers, to really quickly and immediately shut places down by using state regulations and turning them into a local ordinance that gives the police local policing powers. The police chief this morning endorsed this. He and his team and our legal team, Larry, Doug Philp, who's probably here in the back, all did really good work. I'd credit Urbendale as a city that's also been a leader in trying to address these. They've had a similar problem, and they have an ordinance that's similar to this. And we're going to hopefully pass this tonight and begin to eliminate some of these really scurvy places. It's not, you know, to me, it's not really what, it's partly what happens there, but what's really more sad is what happens before the workers get there. And I think our police chief and others at the FBI that are our police department's partners in this will tell you that there really is a real and growing human trafficking problem and that young people, often foreign-born, get caught in this cycle, and for us to be able to protect them is a really positive step. So, Cece is here on a different subject, but she's president of the Beverdale Neighborhood Association, and it's just one group that's really been in the forefront. Linda was in the paper a week ago talking about a neighborhood on the east side, East 8th and East 9th, where we have a lot of complaints about very similar and seedy businesses, massage businesses. These things can really tear neighborhoods apart, and we're going to do something about it tonight. So, Joe?
Good work, Chris. I think the most important thing is we work with legitimate businesses and legitimate massage therapists, and they work with us through this ordinance to make sure they weren't penalized through it. And so, I think that's a bonus, you know, for the people that are actually providing a service to our residents, that they're not penalized for an ordinance that were put in place. So, good work by our chief and our legal department and you, sir, for putting this together, so.
Bill?
Yeah. Springboard off what Chris said. I think it was the spontaneity of how quickly they all sprouted up in Beverdale. You know, I didn't know.
We got them on the south side, too. Don't worry.
I didn't know we had that.
You don't just have them in Beverdale.
I didn't know we had so many bad backs in Beverdale, so it just, and you're right, Joe. It just seemed to be a big conglomeration of businesses that started up and just filled the neighborhoods up. And I believe I've heard every single day, they could see the people coming in, girls would be getting out of a van, parked in front of there, shoot them on in there, take them back out. It was very, very poor for our neighbors. So, I congratulate you and Chris to take care of that and doing a great job to help our neighborhoods out.
Mayor, I'll move it if you're ready for a motion.
I am really ready.
Try it, because it's past 5:00. Final consideration. 52 and 52A.
Yeah. 52 and 52A. Thank you.
Seven, yes.
All right. This takes us to hearings. It's 5:08. Our first hearing item is item 59 regarding request from 50th and Douglas LLC to rezone property located in the vicinity of 3905 50th Street from R160, one-family low-density residential to PUD planned unit development, and for approval of a PUD conceptual plan, Beverdale Town Homes for the development of approximately 2.74 acres for 21 rowhouse one-story townhouses on a private drive accessed from 50th Street, subject to conditions. And actually, the motion, the hearing here tonight is actually to continue this to February 25th of 2019 at 5:00. So, unless there's anyone here to speak to this, we're actually going to hear this February 25th. Could we have a motion from someone?
Yeah, I'll move item 59.
To continue to February 25th. Item 60 is on the vacation of a portion of the city right away and approval of a land exchange agreement with Hawkeye Land Company in conjunction with the Rowett Lofts project and the East 30th Street over Union Pacific Railroad Bridge Rehabilitation Project. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item regarding this land exchange and right away?
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I will move 60, 60A. And if it's okay, I'll waive the second and third reading. If anyone, we have any discussion, I can wait, but I'll move the second and third reading.
Seven, yes.
Sorry. That's why it'd be nice to see this.
Okay. Item 61, on Easter Lake South watershed pond dredging and improvements, resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as elder corporation Jared R. Elder II, President, $1,827,200. Council communication number 18-672A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Let's open the hearing and see if there's anyone here to talk about the Easter Lake South watershed pond dredging. Anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and close the hearing.
I will move item 61, 61A.
Okay.
Item 62, on Little Four Mile Trunk Sanitary Sewer, resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and receive and file bids. Council communication number 18-676. Let's open the hearing on this. Again, Little Four Mile Trunk Sanitary Sewer. Anyone here to speak on this one? All right. Seeing none, let's close the hearing on this item 62. Little Four Mile Trunk.
I will move item 62.
Item 63, on the 2019 ADA Downtown Sidewalk Ramp Program, resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder is T-Zac Concrete Inc., Steve R. Rutt, President, $272,630. Council communication number 18-669A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's open up the hearing on this. This is actually important so that everybody, regardless of age or physical ability, can get safe access around our downtown area.
I will move.
Anyone to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
I'll move 63 and 63A. I'll move 63 and 63A.
All right, that completes the hearings at 5:13. That takes us back to item 54. Item 54 is amending chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication number 18-678. A is a code changes required for the conversion of Fourth Street to a two-way traffic between Grand Avenue and Locust Street. B is code change related to the realignment of 43rd Street and Crocker Street. C is removal of on-street parking restriction on the south side of Osceola Avenue from East Ninth Street to 155 feet to the east. D is removal of the on-street parking on the east side of Southwest 39th Street, south of Park Avenue, including the cul-de-sac. E is removal of on-street parking on the west side of the 26th Street curve from Arnold Road to Payne Road. F is adding two-hour parking-only restriction and amending lot hours for parks parking lot located on the east side of Second Avenue immediately southwest of the Women of Achievement Bridge. G is code changes for the bus parking inset improvements at the Walnut Street School. H, the code changes needed as a result of the 42nd Street Streetscape Improvement Project. I is a removal of a loading zone on the west side of East Third Street, north of East Grand Avenue. J is removing of loading zones on Walnut Street between 13th Street and 15th Street. That's quite a list. I'm sure there's lots of people here to speak to every one of these. Anybody? All right. Would somebody like to move?
I'm okay moving it. I guess, Scott, we have different plans out there. A has already been complete.
Fourth Street?
Right?
Yes, it's done.
I'm pretty sure it is. It says it in the blue letter, and I saw a video of it on the internet, and I drove it.
Okay, so your point is what?
My point is that I think the council needs to approve kind of some of these major changes before they're implemented.
I think we might have approved the funding for that particular change, but not the code.
You'd like to see them ahead of time.
That accompanies it.
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I mean, it references it was done because it's in conformance with a plan, but it's a plan we haven't passed yet. It just seems to be out of sequence. And, you know, this is one that's probably a little bit different, but if there was one in a neighborhood or something that people really cared about, it would probably, you know, not make our citizens feel good that we didn't know about it, so.
So you're with the motion, you're suggesting that refer to the city manager to at least request that we see these changes prior to implementation?
Yes.
Yes, okay. For everybody that's listening, that's what we're doing.
Did you move them?
Yep, he moved it.
You did, I think.
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved.
With that comment taken into consideration.
Seven, yes.
One consideration.
Yes, and I'll move to waive second and third consideration.
For 54, A through J.
Yeah.
Seven, yes.
Okay. 55 is a communication reporter request from Chase Home of 2119 Southeast Eighth to speak regarding Fort Des Moines Museum and Internet taxation. Chase?
Hey, how you guys doing again? All right, so as far as the Fort Des Moines, you guys probably know the history of it. Built in 1843, that's actually what the town is named for. In 1917, Fort Des Moines housed the first black soldiers to commission, and in 1942, it housed the first female soldiers to commission. And as a veteran, that's important to me. I like the history of the area to stay as it is. That's how you actually grow your town. You keep the history alive, and you keep the natural environment. So my plan is to work with the student, the Des Moines Public Schools. There's about 32,000 of them. If we were to charge $5 for a field trip annually, we would get about $160,000 a year. Now, today, the Des Moines Museum is financially going bankrupt. In 2016, their expenses were $212,757, and they only made $93,215. So that's a gap of $119,542. So if we were to raise that through the public schools, an annual field trip, we'd have an additional $40,000 each year. We could not only save that museum, we could actually expand it and grow it each year. Not only that, we'd have the students get eyes on and care about the history here. So that's my plan for that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Chase, have you talked to the school board members about that?
I have not yet. No, I figured Connie used to be on there, and I prefer talking to you guys, I mean.
It would only be because they probably canceled most of the field trips, right, Jennifer?
Did they?
Financially, they've got a.
It's difficult with the gas and all that. Yeah, makes sense.
It's a great idea.
All right, we'll see what we can do. As far as, I know the next thing, we're talking about the sales tax. I know it didn't pass last time. So here, I'm going to talk about online taxation. In 1990Q, 1992, the Quill Corporation versus North Dakota set a standard that you could tax online purchases if the company had a physical address. And they just overdid that on June 2018, South Dakota versus Wayfair. Now you can collect taxation on sales, on any business, from anywhere. Like if I were to sell you from Florida to Iowa, now I have to pay that sales tax, the state sales tax, which is 7%. That was passed, and it has to be more than $100,000 in annual sales or more than 200 transactions within the state. Now, prior to this, the governor actually saw this coming, and she, on May 30 of 2018, they passed Senate File 2417 that applied that tax, and it should apply to municipalities, too. So if you guys were to pass that 1% sale, that would apply there, too. My plan is, I'm suggesting that we actually have a higher or separate tax for online taxation that allows us to bring in more money, and it will stop hurting the brick-and-mortar companies. You know, if we were to do that separate, if it doesn't pass, the sales tax doesn't pass this time around, or if it does, we could do it slightly higher. And there's precedence to that. You know, you can tax cigarettes higher than gas, or vice versa, whatever. You can do different taxes with different items. And there's also 701 IAC, Chapter 26, taxable services. A lot of this is done as user taxes, so you can look at that as precedence also and look over that law. So the reason I'm looking at this into the future is by 2040, 85% of all commercial buildings, gone. The reason for that is 15% of your purchases are called joy products. You know, it's your clothing, your jewelry, your shoes, things you can touch, things you can wear. A lot of things you don't need to, you can purchase online. Your adrenal, nobody needs to touch it and fill it. You can just purchase online. So within the next 20 years, they said 85% of all commercial buildings will be going away. And that's important to the city since we collect 52% of our taxes through property, and the vast majority of that is commercial. So without that, we have no budget. So it's just something to look at in the future. I mean, if we were the first to do this, it would be Des Moines versus, let's say, Amazon. If anything else, that's good headlines. So, all right, it's just something to look at in the future.
Appreciate your ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
We have motion, receive and file.
Yeah.
Okay, item 56, approving. These are items regarding the imposition of a local option sales and service tax lost. A is a statement of the intent for the proposed council action regarding the submission of the question of the imposition of a local option sales and service tax to registered voters of the City of Des Moines, Polk County, Iowa. B is the initial consideration of the proposed form of ballot proposition for proposal to impose a local option sales and service tax. And C is approving a local option sales and service tax revenue expenditure policy. Let's go ahead and open it up and see if there's anybody that would like to make a statement on this item. Step forward, please. I might ask at this time, how many people are here that might want to speak on this item? Can I see kind of a show of hands? So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. All right, thank you very much. We had about 10. So council, what do you think? Five minutes each, or?
I'll be brief.
Sure, okay. All right. Five or less. And we really appreciate everybody being here and giving us some thoughts and ideas in regard to this. We would ask that, hopefully, that everybody that speaks, that we have a whole myriad of good, new, fresh ideas, that we're not repeating what's already been said. So with that sort of as the rules, start ahead. Give us your name and address, please.
Of course. My name is Sally Buckholz. I live at 1433 45th Street. I'm here as a representative of our coalition of institutions in central Iowa known as AMIS. I'm going to ask my AMIS people to just stand for a moment. Do over AMIS. Thank you. You may see if you see that. Thank you. As you all know, over the summer, we spoke with 500 residents in the community regarding what they'd be willing to raise our own taxes to see funded in light of a local option sales tax vote. Out of that, we created an agenda that included five or six items that we felt that our constituency believed were worth funding. We are pleased to see in the resolution that you're considering tonight that many of those things are included in the resolution, including better infrastructure in streets, sewers, and sidewalks, dealing with abandoned and dilapidated housing, care for children's mental health, rental housing code enforcement and expansion of rental housing inspectors, and expanded library hours. We are so pleased as an organization to be able to say that we support the local option sales tax. We made that decision last Thursday, that we will support it going forward as long as this resolution passes and these things are in it. I want to thank all of you for the time that you have given our organization over the last six months as we just made the, went through this process and discerned what we felt was best for the community and for our institution. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Good afternoon. My name is Cece Ibsen. I live at 4310 Ovita Avenue, 50310 in Beverdale. I also own my own law firm based in Beverdale, and while I am president of the Beverdale Neighborhood Association, I'm here today as a private citizen only, but speaking to voice my support for the 1% local option sales tax. I supported the ballot issue last time, but this time around, I am particularly pleased to note that the city has committed a portion of the anticipated proceeds to street and infrastructure repairs and improvements, most particularly those elements deemed critical following the flash flood on June 30, 2018, and the fallout from it. I came to Des Moines 30 years ago from Washington DC. I settled first in downtown Des Moines in a time when there wasn't much going on in downtown. I've lived for 25-plus years in Beverdale. My first home at 3908 Clinton Avenue in Beverdale was impacted by the floods of 1993 and 1996. My current home, which I've owned since 2000, was impacted by the flood of 2008, after which I had regrading and waterproofing done, and so I was mercifully spared this time around, but many of my neighbors were not so lucky. Residents of my neighborhood are demanding infrastructure improvements. We are, as an association comprised of almost 5,400 households and businesses, also I would suspect some cats. Neighbors are demanding, and for many good reasons, infrastructure improvements, not in five or 10 years, but now. But those necessary improvements come with a price tag, and absent adequate funding sources, the city's good plans to improve infrastructure in Beverdale and elsewhere will end up in a file labeled "Good Ideas But." We need to remind city residents of what isn't subject to the local option sales tax. Things like gasoline, prescriptions, groceries, and utilities, goods and services that we all consume regardless of where we live in the city. We also need to remind ourselves that much of the burden of this additional tax will be borne by folks that don't even live here in the city of Des Moines. In the 30 years I've lived here, this city has exploded. Our culture and our way of life appeal to visitors from across the country and around the world. Thanks to the efforts of the city, the county, nonprofits, individuals, and businesses, we have several big events here in Des Moines over just this next year. The NCAA tournament, the World Food Prize, conventions of all sorts of groups. A group in which I'm a member, PEO, will hold its international convention in Des Moines for the first time ever in September of 2019. Thousands of women from all over the US and Canada here eating, staying, drinking, and shopping for four days. These are events that draw thousands of people from outside Des Moines into our beautiful city, and with these people comes discretionary income, money they will spend in our restaurants, our bars, at our hotels, and in our retail establishments. We, as city residents, will enjoy the benefits of that discretionary spending, which at the end of the day benefits each and every one of us in the form of property tax relief, street and neighborhood improvements, and of particular interest to me and my neighbors, infrastructure improvements. And for those reasons, I wholeheartedly support this resolution. Thank you.
You killed it.
Very well said. That, she said it well.
Good work.
Save that speech. We need to get that out.
I'm Gloria Hoffman, 4200 Leonard Place, Des Moines in Beverdale. I also am here to express strong support for the local option sales tax recommendation. I'm among many residents who had major damage in the flood of June 30, for which I'm still paying, I might add. So I think I speak not just personally, but for a lot of other people who suffered damage, that we are very pleased that you are going to include infrastructure repair of stormwater programs for Des Moines. This is essential. I also appreciate that you've made allocations for libraries, for public safety, for street improvements. Those are all things that make this a vibrant city and a good place to live. So thank you.
Gloria, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Brad Anderson, 4129 Forest Avenue, and I am the state director of AARP here in Iowa, and I'm here to strongly support the local option sales tax. So AARP and Des Moines have a relationship going back a long way, particularly going back to 2013, when Des Moines was the third city in America to join our age-friendly network in conjunction with the World Health Organization. We came back of Portland and, I believe, New York City, and Des Moines was the third to come online. Since then, we now have 311 cities that have joined the age-friendly network, so Des Moines was very much ahead of the curve. And what does it mean to be age-friendly? Well, to be age-friendly, that incorporates everyone from ages eight to 80, and it means you got to have safe sidewalks, it means you got to have safe streets, it means you have to have outdoor recreation, it means you have to have walkable communities, all the things we love as a community. And it is a very big deal to get designated an age-friendly city by both AARP and the World Health Organization. But what we have come to learn, especially during the discussion around Move DSM, is the things that we love about the age-friendly network take money, and it takes resources. So if we want to make our streets safer, if we want to have better response times for EMS, if we want outdoor recreation, if we want all these things, we have to find a way to pay for it. So AARP did not formally engage during the last local option sales tax campaign, but I am very pleased to say we are going to engage in this campaign. This is something that is critically, critically important to our members. It's critically important to the 50-plus community. It's critically important to anybody that cares about maintaining this designation as an age-friendly city. And so on behalf of ARP, I want to say thank you for taking this on. Thank you for all your support and everything you've done regarding the planning on Move DSM, Live DSM, Plan DSMs, all the DSMs, and we are going to be there to help win this in March. Thank you.
Kimberly Stroke Bogus, 1713 45th Street. On a personal note, it's always good to be with AMIS, standing with them on the right side of an issue. I'm here to support the local option sale. I'm here to support the local option sales tax. And only on my part of it, I was lucky enough to serve on the flood recovery communication committee. And so, when we talked about pre-event, during event, and post-event, there was a large learning curve. But what we took away from that is that this local option sales tax will be able to help us in our community. As a BNA board member, I was able to directly see the effects of the flood, what the community wanted. We heard from them at our neighborhood board meetings, at our quarterly meetings. And I think what we saw and what we're going to see is something that we can get behind. As a Parks and Recreation Board member, which is one of the best things I've been able to do in this city, I see the limited resources that they have. I think our parks are a way for community members to have access, no matter who you are or where you come from, the park is within your distance, and it's somewhere that everybody can enjoy. And I'm very happy to see the language. And so, the language is important to ensure much of the burden isn't put on those with income disparities. And I want to ensure the long-term sustainability and vitality of the city that we call home. And so, I hope that the information that comes out of here, I can share with my community, with my neighborhood association, and civic groups that I'm involved in. Thank you so very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kimberly.
Hi. Jan Fried, 3304 Terrace Drive. And I am a member of AMIS, and so I totally support everything that Sally Buckhold said on behalf of AMIS. And I definitely support those priorities, and AMIS will work hard to help this pass. But I'm speaking here on behalf of the Lost Group. We met last week, last Thursday, and so I support whatever people said before me, but I just want to point out a couple of things that's important that maybe hasn't been said yet, that this property tax relief would allow the city to be more competitive with the suburbs and their tax rates. 97 of 99 counties already have this tax, including Dallas County. And I'm sure you know all this, but I'm just reinforcing this. We need this for infrastructure, libraries, roads, as people have mentioned. It's critical to revitalization, and I really think giving people the opportunity to pass this sales tax is a win-win for citizens, the city, and the whole community. So, I'm definitely in support, and as I said, AMIS will work hard to help it pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Matt Cohen, 711 41st Street. Very pleased to be here tonight representing the avenues of Ingersoll and Grand Smith District, as well as the avenues of Ingersoll and Grand Restoration Group. We are pleased to support this public measure for a local option sales tax. This was reaffirmed immediately following the last vote and has been a point of conversation ever since. We believe the success of this measure is crucial to the city's trajectory and to the future. Despite all that we have collectively done as a community, we continue to strive towards realizing our true and full potential. We must not rest now. We must remain vigilant and continue to reinvest in our community to maximize the desirability and vitality of our community, to our citizens, businesses, institutions, and visitors. We believe that the public investments in the avenues have demonstrated the symbiotic effect that that has into the neighborhoods and beyond. We specifically believe that the investments in street and infrastructure improvements, neighborhood reinvestment, public safety, and property tax relief are excellent uses of the source and will result in continued growth for our community. The avenues of Ingersoll Grand request your support for this resolution and look forward to supporting it through the March vote. Thank you very much.
Matt, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, County, members of the city council. My name is Mel Pins. I live at 210 East Bundy Avenue. Proud to say that my first and only house I've ever owned is in the city of Des Moines.
Excellent.
I've been pleased for 15 years to be president of my neighborhood association on the south side of Des Moines and to serve on a number of boards and committees in this city. I speak to you tonight to urge you to vote in favor of bringing this question of the imposition of this local option sales tax to the voters. I was in front of you last year at approximately the same time. Myself and a number of citizens stepped up to form a citizen advocacy committee to advocate for passage of this. As we know, last year in the state law, it was required that if a city wanted to bring this forward, all contiguous cities had to also put it on their ballots, and everybody had to vote as one large voting block, in essence. While the citizens of Des Moines passed this last year by a majority, because a number of suburbs did not, it failed. So, thanks to the legislature having some wisdom, they allowed Des Moines to set its own path. And so, myself and a number of citizens want to again ask you to reconsider this with the language you have on your agenda. And I'm not one that usually lobbies for a tax increase, but Des Moines has to find new and alternative sources of income to support these necessary and proper services that we need for public safety and street and sewer repairs and to deal with blight in our neighborhoods. One of the reasons this is a real issue is Des Moines has had a heavy reliance on property taxes to fund the majority of these city service costs. But that equation relies on property taxes being an undue burden on people like me, who have owned my first and only home in the city of Des Moines. More than 40% of the land area of Des Moines isn't taxable. It's either a river, a flood plain, public parkland, or land owned by nonprofits, hospitals, colleges, and schools, places of worship, or county or federal government. These are all great entities, but they do not pay property taxes. They do benefit our character of our community as well as our economy, but that burden of property taxation falls on the remaining 60% of us to cover the cost for those public safety and community services that everyone expects to have when they work or visit the city of Des Moines. So, we've seen a steady increase in property taxes in Des Moines. Part of that is, hey, if my home is worth more, I pay a little more. I get that. But unfortunately, you had to raise property taxes within recent memory. I don't want to do that again. We cannot continue to dig deeper in the same well. We must find supplemental sources of revenue. Somebody mentioned 97 of 99 counties already have this. Basically, 93% of Iowans are already paying this in their municipalities and their counties. But because Des Moines is a good chunk of the state population, there's a good percentage here where we're being left behind. If you go to a Cyclone game in Ames, which I hope you do, you'll pay it. If you go to Jordan Creek and shop, which, eh, I don't know if I want you to, you'll pay it. But we need to start looking at getting this passed in Des Moines. It will allow us a couple of things here. And the example I like to use, if I pay an extra penny on a dollar of taxable sales if this passes, I'm basically putting in a penny, but we would get another penny, if not two, from people that visit, work, or come to our city, just like those wonderful PEO ladies who are going to come here in 2019. So if I invest in this, I don't see this as a tax. I see it as an investment. It's an investment I can control. It's one where others will assist in paying for the benefits they also receive while in Des Moines. The other nice thing I like about this is this isn't just about revenue. By what you've proposed or what has been proposed here, the ballot language would put 50% of that money into direct property tax levy rate reductions and providing reduction in debt. I don't like to see the city paying off debts on city streets, putting another million and a half dollars of interest on $3 million of McKinley Avenue improvements. And I might be inflating that a little, but you're the accountant and manager, Scott. But the idea is, if we can pay as we go by having better revenue, that's what we all want. And we need to repair our streets to ensure safe traffic management without destroying my car's suspension. So, really, I want to urge you again to vote with proceeding with this question that's in front of you. As a homeowner and for other property owners, including our businesses, we can't dig deeper in our property taxes. That well's deep enough now. We've got to seek alternative sources. So, I hope you will support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
Hi. I'm Stacy Freeland with the American Heart Association. We're very supportive of the local option sales tax. We have many different volunteers that live in this community, and when I've looked at what's outlined for what the revenue would go to, for us and for our volunteers, they're very supportive, especially when it comes to that health equity standpoint of this. When you look at the social determinants of health and those kind of factors that are affecting a lot of the people that live in this city, this is critically important that we really try to invest in ways that we can really help our community members get healthier. For us, you know, we worked really hard on the Move DSM plan and talked with many of you about that. We really like that part of this, that we have some strong language in there. It would be great if we could mention Move DSM in this. That would probably make it a little more enthusiastic for us, because there's a lot of great pieces of the Move DSM plan that we like to see implemented as we move forward with this. But the last thing I want to just point out, this is for us, accessibility and getting people to where they need to go is really, really critically important. That's where Maddie, who's right behind me and going to talk in a second, people need to get, you know, to work, to school, and all of those kinds of things. And the more we can build the infrastructure in our city for that, it's going to be critically important, especially to working families. I think of a lot of my volunteers that live in this community that really could use easier ways to get to where they need to go, and even when it, you know, comes to going to the local grocery stores and those kind of things. So, as we move forward with Move DSM and hopefully passing the local option sales tax, I'm encouraged by this and what you've outlined. Thanks.
Stacy, thank you very, very much.
Maddie Miller, 6220 Southeast Second in Des Moines. I support the option sales tax because I believe, not for me, but just for people with disabilities, no matter what, they should be able to get to where they need to go, school, work, the malls, safe, and proving the sidewalks is a huge, huge thing for me. I am determined to get safer sidewalks in all, in all of Des Moines, including my current location, 6220 Southeast Second, because that is a dangerous street that I live on. They don't have sidewalks to get to the current bus stops. And I would really like to take the bus, not paratransit, but the real bus, but I can't do that because there's not sidewalks. So, thank you.
We're both determined.
Maddie, thank you again very much. Maddie is a strong advocate for us moving an awful lot of our policies forward, and I appreciate you continually coming down and giving us some good ideas. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else to speak, any thoughts? Mr. Coleman?
I'm really inspired and awed by everybody that spoke. I really appreciate it. It strikes me this way. I'm disappointed we didn't get it passed last time. There's an urgency to this. The fluke of state law cost our citizens $37 million worth of services, flood improvements, infrastructure, this year because of kind of that fluke. We passed it. Nonetheless, I think it's the true test of character that anytime you're given a chance to do something again, it's an opportunity to improve it. And if there's one message I have, we can take this to the bank. The proposal we have this year is stronger than last year. And that's in large part to the overwhelming number of people that have gotten involved to give us feedback. We had a major signature event on June 30th of this year in our community, and luckily, it inspired a lot of people, AMIS and neighborhood groups and others, to come forward. And I can tell you, I have no doubt, voting yes and putting this on the ballot is a wise decision for our citizens because we've improved the plan so much over a year ago. And I'm really thrilled to be your instrument. I don't, you know, this is a weird deal because we have to vote on it to kind of procedurally move it forward, but the citizens get to vote on it, and you get to vote on the ballot language that tells us how we're spending it. And so, this is really in your hands, our hands, not just the council's hands. And so, everybody did a good job of explaining the reasons why, and I'm really proud to have been a part of watching this unfold, having a front row at some of the AMIS discussions and the meetings with American Heart and AARP and the library and others that have helped form this proposal. So, my message is, thank you. We have a better plan this year than last year, and this is going to help everybody in our community.
I just want to echo what Chris said to thank the, thank you for all the input that was put in, because it is a better plan. And I think that it's more exact on what the money's going to go for, and it mirrors the work I did on school sales tax when it lost by 43 votes. We came back around with, I believe, a better plan with more detail and overwhelmingly passed. And we know what the success of that has been. Our schools would never have been the condition they are, and I hope this will do, and I know it will be the same impact for the city of Des Moines. And I, we do have to thank the legislature for changing the restrictions that were put on us, that we can now vote on our own, because we really did support it. And now, we can really have our own destiny and get things done that we need to. When you look out and see the people who have been impacted by the flooding, or just in general, the housing, or all the issues that we want to address, I think this is a great opportunity, and I'm looking forward to voting yes on all of these things that are coming before us right now.
Anybody else?
I would just, I just would like to add, I think it's, the verbiage is great, and it was written by the people. It wasn't us that wrote this. This actually is the Citizens Committee and the citizens that have come forward and said this is what's important. So, this is their language, not something that we've sat up here and put together. And it's great. I just thank everyone, and everybody who spoke did a really great job. And now, let's get out there and get the votes out and vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Just thank you to everybody and all their input. We do have a better plan this time. Last time, I was mad in March when we actually passed it, but it lost. And the reason that it lost is, everybody that comes in and uses our services and drives on our streets and uses every amenity that we have in this city, they didn't want us to have the $37 million. And that's, and that's the truth. That is what happened. And that irritates me because every day when you see the interstate, everybody's coming in downtown and everybody's leaving at 5:30, you know, they should help us pay for all the amenities that they're using. And I'm glad that we're able to vote on our own. You know, we, you know, one of the things that wasn't touched on, we have so many blighted houses and commercial buildings in our neighborhoods that this is a priority. We can only do 10 to 15 a year, and those, most of those are out of federal dollars that it's out of, it's out of the targeted area. So, we have to take money out of our general fund to try to find the money to tear these houses down. This will give us the ability to do 150 homes, and that will make a major difference with improving our streets, with taking care of the blighted homes, helping with public safety, police, fire, helping the things that we really is our main priority of what we should be thinking of as a council. We have an alternative revenue source. But it's our job, and it's your job, to get out, get your neighbors out, and get everyone to vote. I'm proud to be able to vote yes on this. I've got to get Maddie some sidewalks, and Scott tells me we don't have any money to do that, but that's a priority. She should be able to take the regular bus. And so, those are, those are some of my comments. 97 out of the 99 counties in this state, you already pay seven cents per dollar. So, everyone needs to keep that in mind and tell the naysayers all of those things of why we need to do it.
Josh, anything?
This is one of those items where you feel like you have to say something, even though everything in some respects has already been said. But I do want to thank everyone for their involvement. I echo everyone up here when saying that this is, on the front end, this is a big improvement in the process. Not just because we heard from more people, but we heard from organizations that helped do the work and heard from their members. So, when we heard from people up here speaking... So, when we heard from people up here speaking, we knew it wasn't just their voices they were providing, but the voice of hundreds of other people in their community that they're speaking on behalf of and with. And that is a powerful piece of this. And it's very clear to me that Des Moines residents want better service that the local option sales tax can help provide. They expressed it pretty clearly last, last time, over 55% of the vote last time. And when we have this opportunity, our residents and organizations that represent our residents have responded by increasing their engagement and adding their voice on the front end. It will only matter if their voices continue to be added to this process because we've got a lot of work to do to make sure that this becomes a reality. And I have every confidence, the folks that I've seen here at multiple meetings, that I've seen at community gatherings, the people who, who meet me at what seems like an unreasonable hour of the day at 8:30 and 9 o'clock at night for a cup of coffee to talk about stuff. I mean, I've seen you over and over again, and I know you'll put in the work, and that's how we make change in our community. That's how we pass something like this that will make a difference in lots of people's lives, that it won't just be Maddie that gets a sidewalk to allow her to access her community. It'll be a whole lot of folks that we make infrastructure improvements that make their community work better. It'll be a whole lot of folks that we address housing conditions and make not just their neighborhood stronger, but their lives better. It'll be a whole lot of folks that benefit from that Northeast Fire Station that Linda was talking about earlier in the meeting, and that benefit from better response time and enhanced service. So, I'm excited about the work we're going to do, and it's going to come from taking this, having the same types of conversations that all of you have helped have over the last few months, and having them with your friends and neighbors over the next few months because that's how we pass something like this. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Really, what can we say but, you see all the faces out here and looking to see if we can improve our city. We are really at a crossroads here. We can stay where we are and continue to hike up property tax rates, or we can take our own destiny in our hands. This is an excellent opportunity for us to do that kind of, of work. Joe brought up this with the people, can you imagine 35,000 to 40,000 people coming into Des Moines every single day, using our public infrastructure, using our libraries, using our police and fire protection? All this stuff they pay nothing for. All of us are putting that money in so that they can enjoy what their quality of life during the workdays like. I, for one, would like to see a little buy-in on that. That's, that's a big improvement that I want to see happening. Also, as opposed to some of the other taxes we pay now, this one cent is going to be something the city of Des Moines controls. We don't have to look up to the Golden Dome up there and tell us, well, here you're going to pay six cent sales tax, but you're only going to get a half a cent in return. This is something we take in and we have the control to spend it the way we want it and as we see it fit. And thank you for all of your suggestions along that line because those are the things that really boosted, boosted the capabilities of getting this thing passed on this next go-around. And with that increased sales tax, the one thing that I think all of us sitting at this table have heard, in addition to blight, has been rental inspections. Rental inspections and, and a public nuisance ordinance. They have been sitting on the back burner. This allows us to add more inspectors to keep our city moving in the right direction. I'd love to see a time when we can come in and there isn't a blighted property in here, and we can put that money to other use. But we know that's not going to be the case. But you, with this type of wording in the ballot, we are going to make some progress. So, I can thank you guys very much for taking the time to come down here. This is a very important thing for us to vote on, and so, our work is just beginning. Thank you.
Well, since everybody else has spoken, I think I might as well make a couple of quick comments.
It's a very important issue.
You know, again, as I said, to open our, our evening, it's so important that we engage our citizens and that they feel like they have a voice and that something can actually happen as a result of, of their input and their working together, putting their heads together to come up with some good ideas. You know, we look at solution-based ideas, and we push that through the city council, especially in, in a very open sort of a forum in so many ways, whether it's Live Des Moines, Connect Des Moines, Move Des Moines, Improve Des Moines. The idea, of course, of all of us is to improve safety, the quality of life, neighborhood improvements, road and street improvements. And by the way, for a couple of you that, that mentioned it, the manager and, and our Parks Department and the chief has given us sort of the green light to put some lights up in Evelyn Davis and also over at Mel King. And so we're going to move forward on some of those ideas as well. But back again, in conclusion, it's all of us working together. You know, Des Moines gets a lot of accolades for a lot of things, you know, whether it's the best place for young people to raise a family, or get a job, or have a career. And it's about quality of life. It's about the improvements that we've made. We, and I say all of us, working together because it's your input that gives us some of the ideas that we can then implement in and around the city. I mean, the idea, you know, a number of years ago of trying to connect every single citizen to be within a 10-minute walk of a park or a trail, people thought, yeah, you can't make that happen. We're going to make that happen, and we're working to try to make it happen. It's because of input of our citizens and because of people, young, middle-aged, old, all working together and saying, what can we do to make Des Moines a better place? And so, I want to thank you, and I know for all of our city council, for your input in this process, and let's all work together and make this become a reality, and let's put that money to good use in the city of Des Moines. And thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
And we put the baby to sleep.
And with the youngest member of our group over here by the door.
She's filming us.
Actually.
We're live.
Now the eyes are open.
You know, for all of us in here, it's for all the young people, it's for Maddie, it's for everybody, but actually it's for the next generations that we do this. We want Des Moines to be good today, and we want Des Moines to be good for generations to come. So, if somebody can move this, let's move this forward and see if we can't get going.
I'll move 56A, B, and C.
Now the work starts.
Volunteer, get those votes.
Mel?
Seven yes.
Let's move out on item 57. Item 57 is Live DSM, Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan and Adopting the Plan as an Element of the Amendment to Plan DSM, Creating Our Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, Council Communication Number 18-666.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anybody want to speak on this item? I think we kind of have a little earlier, but.
I move item 57.
All right, item 57.
Can I just make one comment?
You can make whatever you want.
Because when I was talking about Riverview, I specifically didn't thank the Parks Department. But I love this plan, and, you know, we have the whole plan, and I have it out so everyone can see it, because it's such a great plan, and it's because our Parks Department, everybody there is so wonderful to work with. They really are.
Great.
I mean, I've sat through Riverview meetings, and the planners are there, and they're just, I think they're brilliant. So, that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
Good work, Ben.
All right, item's been moved.
Bill, Bill, what you got going on over there? Bill's over there doing selfies.
The council of everybody comes.
I guess.
All right, item 58, Scheduling a Hearing on Not to Exceed $8,500,000 Refunding and Reissuance of Section 108 Government-Guaranteed Participation Certificates, Series HUD 2008A and Associated Note Issued for the Grays Landing Project for 1/14/19. Anyone to speak to this? This is scheduling a hearing.
Seeing none, Mayor, I'll move item 58.
Okay.
Seven yes.
All right, that completes that part. We did have one extra item added. This is an extra item and is filed after 5:00 PM on the Wednesday preceding the council meeting and has been included upon the amended agenda by the city clerk with sponsorship of the mayor and city council members who shall deem the item of significant urgency to warrant an immediate council action. The said statement of urgency from the city manager and/or appropriate department directors shall be placed on file with the city clerk. This item tonight is approving the incorporation of Connect Downtown Plan as an element of Move DSM Transportation Master Plan. The sponsors on this item were council members Coleman and Gatto. Council Communication Number 18-683. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'd, I'd move, I'd, I'd make just a couple of quick comments if I could, Mayor. I was resistant in passing this before, just in the sake of transparency. You'll see that there is a change between the blue letter from a month ago, I think it was, and tonight. It speaks to the funding limitations that we have here. Given the discussion that we just had, I don't think anybody would argue that anybody stepped forward and said, we really need to spend the sales tax downtown. And I wanted to make sure that there was clarity about the source of funding and what it's going to take to get this project done. Philosophically, I'm, I'm 100% on the recommendations here. I think it's good. I think it will build a safer environment downtown. I think the places where we've done it, you know, I've been around long enough that we made Court Avenue two-way and East Locust two-way, those have been monumental successes. And I think as we strive to make things more pedestrian-friendly, that's, that's good. The problem is, this is not the priority of the citizens in most corners of the city. And I, and I wanted to make sure that I understood Scott's approach to this. So, in, in the blue letter, he added a paragraph that, that speaks to that. You know, unfortunately, as aspirational as this plan is, the way I do the math is, you know, under the, the policy that, that Scott's laying out today for funding, this is really a 40-year funding window. And unless we are lucky to get big grants, which folks like Larry James and our, our transportation staff are working on, but unless we get something big from outside sources or from the private sector, we're talking about a 40-year ramp-up. One of the questions I had a month ago was, how does that compare to the priorities we've been hearing about? And I think, because Scott and I have talked, I told him I was going to ask him, I, I think people want to know that we're first committed to Blitz on Blight, and that that's going to be the source of funds. So, if Connect Downtown is 40 years, how long would it take to do Blitz on Blight?
I'd anticipate seven years, maybe eight in the long end.
I think that's good, a good talking point for us to have, to show, that it shows people what our, our priorities are. What, what about the safer out-to-school sidewalks and some of the high-critical things? Maddie stated for this agenda item too. We talked a little bit about what, what the timeframe to funding that under the proposal with some local option sales tax money going in.
Yeah, two to three years.
Two to three years. So, I, I wanted some benchmarks out there, partly so I could tell the citizens, their property tax money, the local option sales tax money are going to the high-priority projects in their neighborhoods. This is being funded by TIF, money that we can't spend outside of downtown. And because we're restricting the funding and we're acknowledging that this is a really long window without outside sources, I'm able to support it and excited about it. The one small thing that I'd maybe put on the record, Scott, that, that I am aware of is the planning area for Connect Downtown, I think stretches from almost Columbus Park to University on the north. And some of those areas are outside the TIF district. And, and those that are in the residential areas like Cheetum Park and River, Riverbend, Columbus Park, McKinley, we, we, we probably need to have a conversation about how those areas are funded, you know, through our, our normal channels. But, but in downtown, I think we need to rely on the TIF district that, that can't be spent in the neighborhoods.
Anybody else? Joe?
Just full transparency, I, I, you know, I've probably been one of the naysayers on this from, from the very beginning, and so I, I just wanted to say fundamentally, it is a great plan. I think Councilman Coleman laid it out perfectly. I couldn't have said it any better. But we're here to prioritize, and our main goal is to get back into the neighborhoods. We've said that for four and a half years. We're, we've just had a group of people leave that wants their neighborhood, wants to take it back. I know that the downtown is, is part of the neighborhood, but my biggest fear was that if we don't have the buy-in from the private sector, which this is calling out that, they're the ones that are going to have to make a lot of infrastructure changes to their parking garages, to their entrances and exits, when you change a one-way to a two-way. So if they're not bought into this, then we're, you know, we're, we're putting a lot of additional cost onto that. So, the way that it's laid out, I applaud City Manager's office. I know there was a lot of hard work from our engineering and traffic department. Fundamentally, it is a great, safe plan, but we just need to prioritize. So, I would be happy to move extra item one, unless there's more comments.
Okay, anybody have anything?
Well, I, I'll just say, I, I appreciate this coming to a vote and that, I think it's pretty critical that Connect Downtown be part of Move DSM. This is the, the transportation plan for, and I appreciate the acknowledgement, downtown is more than just a business district. It's also a neighborhood. It's somewhere where it's a destination for our residents who want to be able to, you know, I hope one of the places that Maddie comes when she, when she gets on that bus is downtown. And downtown needs to work just like her neighborhood needs to work. And this is a piece that will help with that. It is ambitious, and there are a lot of pieces to it. So, we've got to figure out how to, how to get it funded, and that includes, includes working with partners in the private sector, includes working to get, get additional grant dollars. But this allows that process to keep moving forward, and it also allows us, when we are making investments in existing infrastructure downtown, to take this framework into account and have that help guide those decisions as well. So it's important for all of those reasons. I recognize the heartburn and hesitancy from several of my colleagues, and I'm committed to working through those issues so that as, as this continues to move forward, we get to a place that, that hopefully everyone is comfortable and, and we get the end result that we've wanted all along.
All right.
Also say that I'm glad we brought it forward now because really this was part of the integral plan of all of it. I appreciate it's downtown, but there were neighborhoods being impacted, and we need to make sure if we believe in Move DSM, that this was part of it. I realize there's monetary or whatever, but this was the guideline and the guiding principles on how we were going to address some of it, and some pretty important neighborhoods that are now up and coming and need to be, you know, as the new development's coming on, we need the plan to go with it. So I appreciate that we've brought it forward, so we have a complete picture now of how we want to move DSM.
All right. All right, as we complete our voting, it's a great discussion, and I know that this is part of what makes us who we are. is part of what makes us who we are, having these discussions. I will mention, as we think about Des Moines, and I listen to people that come and visit our city or live nearby, that will have told me face-to-face that they're there in Iowa is right here. It's in downtown. It is a neighborhood. There's over 15,000 people now living in downtown. There's over 80,000 people that work downtown Des Moines, and we need to kind of make sure it continues to be a priority to provide safety and quality of life for, in addition to those people that live and work down here, that also visit down here, that are hundreds of thousands of them every year, to every event and other things that happen in and around. So, I think it needs to be a priority and continue to be, but certainly not turning our back on any of the other parts of the city. And I want to thank this council and our citizens for working to help us set our priorities for the future of this city. So, you know, with that, Madam Clerk, what's our...
Seven yes.
We pass this, 7-0. Thank you all very much. And this is our last item on this agenda. This also is our last regular meeting for 2018, and I want to thank our citizens for their engagement and their patience with us as a city council. And we look forward to 2019 to be even a bigger and better year for our citizens, and let's all keep working together. Have a great holiday. Happy New Year. This meeting's adjourned.
Mayor, if I could, before the council leaves, I'd like to have Alex stand up for just a second. We have a new hire in the city manager's office, Alex Hassel, will be assisting us as a policy liaison, and will be assisting the council as well in arrangements and commission appointments, several other items. So, I wanted you to see Alex. She's in the office now.
No.
Thank you.
Good. All right, thank you.
Enjoy this meeting.
(laughing)